Everybody, um, Courtney, everybody again. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, a regular meeting of the City Council, Satellite Beach, December 2nd, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Osmer for a moment's silence. Stand up, please.
Please join me in a moment's silence, please. Thank you. And the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome a presentation by Brevard County Sheriff Wayne Ivey and Triad President Joseph Downs on Project Lifesaver. Just please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us tonight. And as always, thank you to your chief for everything he does to partner with us. We have a great relationship. In fact, all of the law enforcement agencies in Brevard County share that same relationship. And it's truly a good thing for the citizens, as we can all imagine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you for probably about two hours, and, no, I'm kidding, I'm not. I'm actually gonna ask Joe Downs to come up, and I will tell you that the program he's gonna talk about, Project Lifesaver, and you heard me call it a program, just a short time ago, was really not a program. It was just a tool that we had. Today, because of Joe's leadership, because of his guidance, it is an absolute program that shines and is saving lives like you can't imagine. And he'll come up and he'll tell you a little bit about it. But we're here tonight. We're very proud to work with Satellite Beach Police Department on this. We're very proud to tell you that the Satellite Beach Police Department is the first agency on the coastline to be fully trained in this, be fully outfitted with this, and start using it to save lives here. And so, I'm gonna ask Joe to come up and tell you a little bit about the program, and then I'll close out as we go.
Joe? Thanks, Sheriff, and thank you for having us. Before I get into the presentation of the device that we're donating to Satellite Beach, I wanna go through a short PowerPoint presentation. And I think when I get done with it, I'll probably have answered all your questions. If not, I'm welcome to be happy to answer any questions that you might have, as well as for the audience. We're gonna pass out a brochure that kinda gives you an outline of what the program's about. These brochures that we've got were made specifically for police cars. And what we do is we tuck those in, the sun visors of every cruiser in the county, whether it be sheriff, or it be law enforcement, police departments, municipalities, whatever. They're all tucked in the sun visor. So when we have a missing person, we give that to the caregiver. They in turn call us, and we enroll them in our program. Let me start the PowerPoint. All right, thank you, ma'am. Well, again, it's a partnership between three different organizations. And let me back up here a second. I really, this is one of our greatest nightmares. I'll explain the partnership we have. This is one of our greatest nightmares. May 25th, 2014, we had a man in West Melbourne that wandered off and to this day hasn't been found. And it's unfortunate that he wandered off. But what's more unfortunate is the fact that it wasn't the first time he wandered off. The first time he wandered off, he was found within a matter of hours. And if law enforcement had done their job and known about Project Lifesaver and was educated about it, they would've been able to give a brochure of the family, the first time he wandered off. And when he wandered off the second time, May 25th, 2014, we'd have found him in a matter of minutes. But because we dropped the ball, he unfortunately has never been found since. And that's, that's a terrible scenario. This is another one of our biggest concerns, is an autistic mother calling and saying, "I can't find my child." Well, the bracelet will help her, so she didn't have to worry about that. Six out of 10 people with this disease, they wander off. That's kind of startling statistic. And we have more and more and more of them on a very regular basis. Now, Project Lifesaver is, it's basically, I won't read you all the text, but it's basically, it's a program designed to assist in tracking and locating persons with Alzheimer's and memory disorders such as Down syndrome and autism. It's a personalized radio transmitter bracelet that's worn by the participants, and with the use of the Sheriff's Aviation Unit and patrol deputies, participants can be tracked if they should become missing. The bracelet that we're talking about is this little bracelet right here. I'll pass it around so you guys can see it. It's attached to the person, and we like to put it around their ankle instead of their wrist, around their ankle. I forget it's even on there. And it stays on for a period of time. The bracelet can't be taken off unless they cut it off. If they cut it off, we put it back on with a leather strap. If they take it off with a leather strap, we put a Calvular that we use from Bulletproof Fest, we put that on, and we encourage them to try to shoot it off, because there's no way to get the Calvular strap off. But that being said, that's the device itself. And a little bit more about it, Project Lifesaver International, it's an international organization. They provide our hardware and our software for this endeavor. Now, Brevard Triad is a second component of the operation. It's a 501(c)(3) operation. And basically what they do, they raise money to help senior citizens. They've been in operation here in our county since 1998, and they've been nationwide since 1988. And with the use of the cooperation of the sheriff at that time in 1998, and the state attorney, they created our Brevard County chapter. And I, fortunately, at this time, am president of the organization. And we, our objective is to raise money for crime prevention for senior citizens. That's what we do. A perfect example, yesterday morning, I get a call from the fire department here in Satellite Beach, asking us if we would take care of the cost of putting a hot water tank in, a resident in our county, in your city, 86-years-old, blind, and lives alone. We went and paid for the cost of the hot water tank. I paid the plumber today to have it installed, and she's a happy camper. That's what Triad does. And again, we're a funding mechanism for Project Lifesaver. Now, the Sheriff's Department is probably the greatest part of the whole three-part party here. And they basically use their resources, the helicopters and our cars, and to be able to go out and locate people that happen to wander off. This is the criteria. And typically, they have to have a memory issue that's been diagnosed, or brain damage, or an illness. They cannot have any driving privileges. We certainly don't want them driving around. We'd have trouble finding them, but they did. And they have to have a caregiver. We have to know when they're missing, and the only way you'd know that's if they had a caregiver. Is there a cost? There was a cost prior to July of this year. And I'm not patting myself on the back, but going out and preaching the gospel according to Project Lifesaver, I've been able to raise $87,000 so that our residents in our county will not have to pay a penny for this program. Now, I don't, again, say that to compliment myself. I call, I just say that because that is the desperate need that we have in our county to be able to provide this protection. And the always, the excuse I always hear is, "I can't afford the $290 cost." That's not an excuse they can use anymore. So we're putting more people into the program. We originally had 28 people in the program when I took it over a couple of years ago, and it was on life support, to be honest with you. Today, we have 188. Okay? So, and again, it's only because of people like Chief that calls and says, "Hey, Joe, we have a need. Will you help us?" And we step up and cover the need. And thank God for people like, you know, Chief Pearson, because he has a heart to help people. And I, and I can't say enough good about the Chief. Thank you, Chief. How often do the batteries change, and by whom? They're changed every 60 days. And we have qualified personnel with our volunteer unit, the COPs with our Sheriff's Department, to go out, and, and we, we go out every 60 days and change the batteries on them. Does it work outside Brevard County? Yes. It's an international organization. I have a couple right now in, that live in Palm Bay that are in Poland. While they're in Poland, they're protected. We've contacted the authorities in Poland where they're at, and they have Project Lifesaver in that general area. So the family's been notified, when you go there, if he wanders off, call this number. They'll locate him. So it's an international organization. Do we protect people from out of the state? Yes, and out of the country. We have people that visit, as you know, snowbirds on a very regular basis. And when they come here, we put them in our system, we protect them. When they go back north, they, they're back out of our system and back into the, the Canada, for instance. I have a couple that just came in today from Canada. We put them in our system. When they go back in July, they'll be back in the Canada system. So yes, we watch people from all over. I have twins that come down in September to spend two weeks with mom from Sandusky, Ohio. They transfer all the information onto our database. We watch them. When they go back, we transfer it back up. So we watch people that visit. When they come and visit our area, we watch them as well. We have a problem boarding an airplane. You certainly will, because that's a ticking time bomb to TSA. So we have created, in our county, a passport. So when Mrs. Williams calls me and says, "Joe, I'm gonna be going to Paducah, Kentucky with my husband for a wedding. Would you be able to, you know, make sure that he's not gonna be harassed at the airport?" And I created a passport, and the passport is handed to TSA at the airport. There's a code on it. And that code is giving him permission to enter the aircraft without going through security. She goes through the same system. They may wave a wand over them, but they don't make them stand in line. They don't make them take their belt, shoes, and socks off. They go, and they go, the first ones on, they're the first ones off. And the passport helps them with that. Why don't we use a GPS tracking device, and why do we use a radio? Y'all remember the Malaysian airliner that disappeared a while back? You know, it's funny, that's a state-of-the-art airplane. That's a Boeing 777. They've never made an aircraft any better than that one. Now, don't you know if GPS was that reliable, they'd have never lost that airplane? The truth of the matter is, GPS does not work underwater. Radio transmitters do. So when an airliner goes down in the ocean, they're listening for the black box. They're listening for the chirp. That's exactly what they're listening for, is that chirp right there. That battery in that device is good for 60 days. The battery in a black box is also good for 60 days. I dropped this transmitter that you have in your hand and a glass of water at my house a few days ago and took that picture. It works underwater. It works in the bottom of a swimming pool. It works in the bottom of a murky pond. So we can locate people that have got that on. If they've got the bracelets on, we'll find them. This is one of our stories. It's in the Satellite Beach. This is a man that lives at the base, on the base. And the sad story about it is not only the age, but another thing that's sad about the story is the fact that he was a Top Gun pilot. They did not know he had Alzheimer's until he was found in his jet plane at the wrong airport, at the wrong city, the wrong county, in fact, the wrong country. And after they thought he was trying to pull some shenanigans, they went back in and did an evaluation. It found out he has full-blown Alzheimer's and was flying jet planes. So he's in our system, in your city, at the base. This is another one of my greatest heroes of all time. It's my father-in-law that lives with me. I would've never thought in a million years I would know anybody that has Alzheimer's. He was diagnosed in October with it, after he wandered off. And he lives with me. I would've never thought it in a million years. So I'm touched by the program more so now than ever before. I believe we all have a purpose, and I believe my purpose is Project Lifesaver. And that's the reason why. Again, we can't do this without Project Lifesaver, Brevard County Sheriff's Office, and Brevard Triad. Do you have any questions?
Let me ask you this. Thank you very much. Incredible program. How do we help you?
Well, I just want you to pass the word about Project Lifesaver. We may not have the memory issue today ourselves, but you know, we know somebody that does. We've had friends we go to church with, we go to grocery with. We, we know pretty much a lot of people that have got memory issues. And I'll open this up and let you see what it's all about. This is what we're gonna be donating to the chief. This is the noise that we're listening for. We plug in the radio frequency, and once the frequency's in here, and the call comes in, we're missing someone, we notify our helicopter in Merritt Island. They leave the ground. They can get 10-mile range on this equipment. Chief will be able to get 3-mile range on the ground. So when we cross paths, we get into the area, we plug in the individual radio frequency, and they're all different. We plug them in, then we'll get this chirp. And we've got some dials here, and we tune them in. And we tune them in, and we find the people. We've never had anybody ever lost forever. We've never had anybody lost more than 30 minutes. And we most generally find everybody within 15. How you can help me, all I ask you to do is pass the word about this program to people that you may know. I have so much great confidence in your chief that we have asked him to be part of this program. And so he's said absolutely. We have 10 residents in your jurisdiction right now in the program. His, his, he's gonna be helping us from South Cocoa Beach to Sebastian Inlet, until we can get more of these. We gotta raise these, they're $1,500 apiece. We have to raise the money to be able to buy more if we go down. But you have the greatest population on the beach side of 10 people in our system. So, all I ask you to do is please help us. And with that being said, Chief, if you'll come forward, Chief Pearson, on behalf of the Brevard County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Ivey, Brevard County Triad, we want to present you with this, this receiver. Your department has been trained. They're well-educated. They're eager to use it. Our prayer is, you'll never have to use it. But we also know with great confidence, if we have a call, you'll be there to help us.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just close. You heard me say at the beginning, we now have a program because of Joe. I think you see his passion for, for it. And he's absolutely on point. Everybody, we were scraping and scrapping to buy the bracelets for individuals to have the devices. And because of his leadership, we now have 81,000 in Triad that we can use exclusively for this program. So, the best thing for us, and I know the chief would echo this, the best thing for us is word of mouth. To know someone that their family could, could benefit from this, spread it to them, let Joe counsel with them, and let, let, let the device work for itself. And the last thing I'll say about Joe is, he's a volunteer. He, he does all this as a volunteer. So, he's got a full-time job, and he still does all this. So, I just ask you to give him a round of applause, because he does a good job.
Joe, thank you very, very much for the presentation and for all the work you do. Thank you. Up, question?
Mr. Downs, that's the most moving presentation I've ever heard in this chamber. And all I can say is congratulations to you, and God bless you. What a wonderful service you're providing.
Joe, we have another question.
Joe, I'm on the Brevard Commission on Aging, and you came out and presented us many months ago. And I just wanna say, you know, congratulations on the $80,000 that you've raised. That's tremendous, because you were, you didn't allude to the fact that you were on life support at that point in time. I don't think we really knew that. But again, to you and the sheriff, congratulations, guys. Beautiful job. And I think, you know, if you have a chance to come back to Brevard Commission on Aging and present again, we'd love, we'd love to hear about the results.
It's gotta be asked.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
God bless you.
Okay. I believe we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, because I believe Agenda Item 4, Presentation for Relay for Life, is not here.
Here.
Not here. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, Discuss, Take Action on Recommended Order of the Special Magistrate for the request for release filed by the Gersh's. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. We are asking you to accept the recommended order by the special magistrate. The proceeding did come before Daniel Menzeris. He served as the special magistrate in the 1751 hearing with Klaus and Bridget Gersh. They requested, or filed a request for relief under that statute provision, which required us to have a mediation session in a public hearing. We were unable to mediate the issue. However, we did go through the public hearing, and the magistrate found in favor of the city. So we are asking you to accept that recommendation, and we'll move forward with the code enforcement proceedings.
Second? I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, seconded by Councilman Montanaro. Questions from the council? Here and now at this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Number 5.
If I may. I was one of the interested parties. My name is Joseph Currente. I live at 1697 Highway A1A, Unit D. Prior to that, for 15 years, I lived on 638 Ocean Street, which is one block north. And I presented the magistrate with pictures, et cetera, of the fence in question, and how I thought that it was against all of the regulations that we had applied, you know, that the city has applied, and also represented, not only to me and, and the people that live in my unit, a hurricane issue. So I appreciate very much that you've taken this, this action. I applaud James Beadle for being there as the attorney, and for Courtney Barker as well. And I also have some photos and pictures of showing you where the fence used to be, and now what the new fence is, and how it's obviously in multiple, it violates multiple rules of the city of Satellite Beach, which is fairly strict in its, in its governance of the beach side, as I well know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Citizens' comments are still open for non, excuse me, not this kind, discussion on the Gersh ruling. Here and now, bring it back to council. Any further council comments? Here and now, Leonard?
Councilman Bryan?
Yes.
Councilman Hawthorne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Citizens' Comments for Non-Agenda Items. The floor is open. Here and now, close the citizens' comments. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, City Council Comments. And if I may, I'd like to start with it.
Can I just say?
Yes, yes. Thank you. First, Chief, I want to thank your department. Not often do you get letters thanking you when you pull somebody over for tickets. And, you know, this last week, two weeks, we've gotten some very nice compliments on your department. And I know the council, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I met, we met, you know, there with Colonel Wallace at the base on a few different issues. We've got a pretty good working relationship there. Working on some on 110 acres, and also an idea City Manager Courtney had on a P4 initiative that maybe we could partner in on a walkway or on the east side of A1A. So we had a very good meeting with them. Also, I attended Delora Junior High School. The new principal, Bobby Pruitt, who grew up in town, went to Delora, went to Satellite, and now he is the principal at Delora. And very interesting guy. He very much into the city, very much into his school, and wants to be really a big part of the community. And we had a meeting last night with him. He invited people, community leaders, and we came at the 6 o'clock turnout. And if you have a chance, Bobby's a great guy, and he's very much willing to get involved. Satellite High School, I don't know if you've seen, they had a car project, and they came in second to nation on it. I went there at 5 o'clock today, and they're gonna stay over tonight. They're having a little presentation there for anybody who would like to stop by after this meeting. You need to really see what the young men and women of that class have done. It's spectacular. They, that shop program runs, they told me, on $1,200 a year is all that, that program is given from the schools. They got a grant for $2,000, and he told me the process they went through. They'll show you the car before and after, and it's amazing what they've done. And they finished second out of the whole country on this restoration of this automobile. So if you get an opportunity, please go by there. We met with the residents yesterday on Roosevelt. We had a great meeting. That project will start sometime after the 4th of January. For the most part, extremely well-received. We had the contractor there, the engineer, the city staff was there, and we took email addresses from all the residents to keep them informed of how the project is gonna, you know, continue where and so forth. We'll give them a lot of help. Also, we met with Tom Kurth of First Financial to see about help with a right-of-way in front of his property, so that when VOT comes through for a sidewalk, that they have room to work. He was very receptive to it, and will be back with us with his paperwork by Friday. That's all I have to report. Would you like to start?
First of all, I would say, Steve, would you please turn that microphone over toward Illinois, not yours, not yours. Thank you. The South Beach Coalition Meeting for December has been canceled because the TPO meeting for December has been canceled. This marks the end of Melbourne Beach. Haldy, the seat is the voting representative on the TPO for this coalition. The seat now moves to Indy Atlantic for the next two years. Commissioner Jill Hoffman will be Indy Atlantic's representative to the coalition and possibly the new voting member of the TPO. I'd like, anytime we get a letter, a positive letter about one of our employees, I'd like to bring the two wonderful letters. We've got our police officers. Always put those in the packet, because I really want the public to have access to that kind of correspondence.
Yeah, they'll go on your next one, because you got it over the holidays, so your packet was already done.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I attended the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference from the 18th to the 20th over in Orlando. And out of all the conferences that I've been to over the years, it was by far the best legislative conference that we had. There's basically five policy committees that numerous elected officials from throughout the state sit on. And they basically vet out through a lot of different items to come up with whatever the two items are for each committee that are going to be the legislative agendas for the municipalities in Florida. And it was really informative. I sit on the Urban Administration Policy Committee, and the two policy pieces that we looked at are public record laws and relocation of utilities. And for those of you who aren't familiar with that item, FPNL and all the utilities are basically lobbying the legislature so that the cities are liable. Anytime there's a project and a utility has to be moved, it would fall under the city's responsibility, which means that we would be basically double taxing our residents for something that the utilities have always done. And when you look at the stormwater projects and the other issues that municipalities are facing today, especially along the Indian River Lagoon, it's a tremendous burden to the municipalities when they're looking at stormwater projects that are gonna help clean up the lagoon. I mean, you add the thousands of dollars to relocate those utilities that have to be moved anytime we do a stormwater project. So it's a big concern for us. In fact, it was one of the, it's one of the things that we'll be looking at when we go to Tallahassee, because this is gonna be moving down the pike. It was a bill last year that didn't go anywhere, and it's probably gonna get more traction this year. So, but other than that, I also attended the Delora meeting yesterday with the mayor and the city manager. And once again, I think it's a great opportunity for us to partner with Delora to get out their message. Bobby was telling us about the information that he gets out to the parents, and there's different things that we can do in the city to assist them. I also attended the Roosevelt meeting last night, and I want to just commend, you know, Bert, who, he's there for all our projects, and he was there last night, you know, articulating his position and what he does for our residents in the city, so that all the people that are gonna be impacted by this project know who Bert is. And, you know, Alan from Public Works, and as Frank said, the contractor and the city engineer. So it was a great meeting. And I think the people were receptive. They understand, you know, what's going on. And I hope they get it out to their neighbors also. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. As you know, I've missed the last council meeting. I was attending the Department of Health's Fall Prevention Injury Conference. I'm co-chair for that, that initiative with the Florida Department of Health. We had a two-day strategic planning meeting, and we talked quite a bit about where we go with falls throughout the state of Florida. I mean, one of the things that we're doing is, of course, what the chief has in the fire department, is to do with the EMS and have them as first responders for all of this. But what's changed is that it seems to be, from the strategic planning process, and we'll see how this kind of bets itself out, that they're now going to where they're funding, CDC is the primary funding source for most of the initiatives with fall prevention throughout the United States, and they seem to be funding more towards healthcare systems, meaning like a Wusthof, or a, or Health First, or that sort of thing. Completely moving away from the model that we implemented here for 10 or 15 years with using the community resources and that sort of thing. There's just been so many cost-cutting initiatives at Tallahassee as well, and within the Department of Health, that staff has been stripped out as well in a number of areas. I mean, a lot of programs are just, they're there, but there's nobody checking on the programs. So we've got some conference calls over the next couple of weeks regarding all of this, and I'll keep you guys posted. But again, I, you know, as far as being on the right track, what Don Hughes is doing with the EMS is, is one of the models. It's definitely there. And I think you know that, Don. I mean, it's, it's what, the direction that we've talked about. But as far as actually getting the enormous number of grants we got to support our elder citizens, I think that we're gonna see those kind of go away, unfortunately. And it's gonna go towards the bigger healthcare systems. And the CDC's thought process behind that is that they can control how people move through and some of the issues that they have better than a city or a small municipality. and some of the issues that they have better than a city or a small municipality can handle. So, you know, despite the fact that we've done pretty well, and we're still considered a model in the state of Florida, we're not a big player as far as the CDC goes. So, there'll be more to come. I just don't have great, really great news, but other than the fact that, like I said, I think we're on the right track with what we're doing with EMS. So, that's all I have at this time.
But then, how's that? Thank you very much. Okay, any further council comments? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Eight, City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Our Satellite High School Symphonic Orchestra will be hosting a community concert at the Satellite High Auditorium on December 9th at 7:00 PM. And the Satellite High School Symphonic Orchestra is also currently raising funds to play at the Music for All National Festival 2016 in Indianapolis. I did put that on Facebook and shared it to try to get their, it's like a GoFundMe site, to see if they can get some funds that way. And I know Councilman Osmer was at their parent meeting when they got the invitation, so it's been really neat to see their progress. They were, so we were basically the only orchestra in the whole United States that was asked to play at that, at that event.
Do you have a school orchestra or a special orchestra?
Satellite High School, yes. Satellite High School Symphonic Orchestra.
But you said it's the only symphonic orchestra in the U.S. to be invited. You mean, you only school?
School, yes, school, yes. And they, in doing that, they beat out nearly 100 applicants, so it's pretty neat. So, I would recommend after they get back from their trip that we recognize them at city council. It would be nice to have them all in here. In terms of informational items, we have FDOT meeting regarding the State Road A1A project, and this meeting is going to be held on December 10th at 6:00 PM at the Civic Center. And this is actually DOT's meeting, not the city's, so we will not be handling that meeting. We will, of course, be there, but this is their public meeting, their legal requirements when they have any project of any size that, you know, affects property owners. So, all the affected property owners will be invited, and they should have received notices. The Brevard County Commission will be holding a workshop on the gas tax proposal on December 10th, 2015, at 1:00 PM. So, I believe the mayor will be attending that workshop with me. I also wanted to mention that the county's Charter Review Committee is now meeting regularly. They have been discussing multiple proposals for the charter. And I would like to point out that we do have some proposals that have been submitted that would substantially impact the city. One proposal includes placing a limit to increasing municipal avalarum revenues at an increase equivalent to the CPI. And this, the county charter does have a provision that if there is a countywide referendum that would affect a city, that if the city's residents defeat it, then it would not apply to the city. However, still, the cities have decided to reach out to their own attorneys, ask them to review that, the constitutionality of that proposal, and how it applies to cities, and then submitted a letter of objection to the County Charter Review Committee. So, I've asked our attorney to do that, and he's preparing that now. And I, and just for your information, I have included that in here, and I will update you regularly after every meeting as to what has occurred there. I know there are some cities that will be attending tomorrow's meeting.
Tomorrow's meeting tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to, I don't have any action items, so I would like to ask Chief Hughes and Linda Harlow to come up and give you an update on a CFAL initiative of theirs that involves our SCAP program. So, come on in.
Good evening, Linda. And just real quick, I had mentioned to you a few meetings ago that we'd be ready to make an announcement on a particular project that we've been working on over the last several months. As you know, through our CFAL program and the program that we created called the Satellite Beach Senior Care Network, which essentially we're doing case management style for all of our patients that are in the community medic program, we have been able to work out a, and I'm going to call it an agreement, but Space Coast Area Transit, their Volunteer in Motion program. What we have been able to identify is we said that transportation for seniors is one of the big barriers to the access of care. And not only that transportation to their medical providers, but medical transportation even for simple things such as grocery store, drugstores, and things of that nature. And with that said, what we're going to be doing, and this is part of where Linda's Stop By and Say Hi group comes in, we're going to be giving a vehicle staged at Satellite Beach Fire Department, but the program will be 100% managed by Space Coast Area Transit using volunteers from our community. And this is kind of a way I look at it as a win-win. We're able to get a transportation piece plugged in here, and we're able to do it, essentially all we are is a coordinating point, but is utilizing Space Coast Area Transit resource. So, Linda's had some conversations also on this and with the Stop By and Say Hi, your COPD volunteers. So, I'll let you fill in the blanks where I might have missed a few things at.
We're just trying to get volunteers in the city who want to be Volunteers in Motion drivers. And that way, Volunteers in Motion can cater just to Satellite Beach residents with this one van that they're going to provide to our city and let us go and give our residents who can't get out transportation.
And just to put this in perspective, today, we just recently had a gentleman who was discharged from the hospital. We were doing our follow-up with them today, realized that they had an appointment to make with their doctor tomorrow. The wife had no way of getting there, and we were able to work out with Volunteers in Motion on very short notice to be able to get that person to their doctor's appointment the next day, which when we look at this and we look at why people are re-admitted into the hospital, part of this because they don't have timely follow-up with their primary care provider. And we were able to, again, connect the dot here. And so, what this particular program is going to allow us to do is that it'll be geared towards our community paramedic program participants and our Stop By and Say Hi participants.
And neighbor helping neighbor.
And neighbor helping neighbor, and that's correct. And so, what we've done, I think we've just kind of closed the loop on the transportation piece. So, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that. I wanted Linda to be part of this because she was instrumental in the conversation when we started looking at the Project Lifesaver and all the other things. I don't know why we're not like listed as AARP's top city to retire to. I mean, honestly, I mean, just the things that are just knocking out of the park, and I'll just make one comment real quick on fall prevention. Today, we had a meeting with FIT. FIT stumbled across our data on falls and said, wow, you may have one of the most deep databases on falls. And so, we met with them today. We've got a follow-up meeting, but FIT wants to make this a large research project and taking what we've done and is actually going to be tying up with their School of Business and their Engineering Department. So, it'll be interesting to see where that goes, so.
Thank you.
So, as Councilman Brymer mentioned, you know, the funding challenges are always there. And something that Mark and I have talked about over the years is we need to take this program that we're doing here in the city and to give it to academia and for us to do good qualitative research on it to show what the true benefit to the community is. It's easy to say, okay, you do X and you get paid Y, and you've got a direct relate, you know, basically a return on the investment. When you're providing services like we're doing, it's hard to actually put a dollar figure to it. And we know just intuitively it's good, but how is it good? And so, this is the things that we've been wanting, what I've been wanting to do for several years here is good, basically university-level research done. Don't take Don Hughes's word on what our data says. Let me hand this off to somebody else and let them look at it and come up with, you know, and either A, yep, you're doing great, B, this is where you need to focus your attentions to. But most importantly, what I think it does is it opens up the door again for additional funding opportunities later on down the road. And so, this is just a move that's happened, really, and it was an offshoot of our Senior Care Network and how this conversation started.
What area do they want to research? What specifically will they be looking at, though?
So, their current working hypothesis is going to be is why do seniors not inform their physicians of the reasons why they fall? Or, as we say, they don't tell anybody that they've ever fallen.
Right.
What they realize, looking through our data, and this, what you and I have noticed, is that slip and falls in the bathroom really isn't what the problem is, but that's where the focus is. And they see exactly the way we have seen it, that falls really happen because of a metabolic reason. And that's the part that they're very interested in. And, you know, I'm not sure why they picked us, but like I said, at 2:00 today, we had a meeting. We're following it up a week after next. So, we'll see where it goes. Who knows?
We expect you to get in touch with AARP.
Well, I mean, I'm working on that application.
How's that going?
Slow.
I mean, it should be a slam dunk. It really should.
It should be. It's just a very, it's a lot, it's very detailed, a little bit more than what I thought. And so, it's just going to take some work to kind of get through it and get that application in. So, but yes, it is on the priority list.
And the other, the other thing, just while we're on this, and I know Linda's been working this, is we've been, this magazine, what is it, Quality Cities? I talked to League of Cities, what, a couple of months ago, I guess, Linda?
Right.
And they want us to do an article for Quality Cities that Linda's currently working on. I think you're pulling everything together, so that was kind of nice. So, the Florida League of Cities is kind of wants to run with some of this as well and wants an article. And Linda's offered or agreed to help participate, put that article together and that sort of thing on the Stop By and Say Hi program, so, and other things as well, so.
We love Satellite Beach.
Yeah, so anyhow.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Courtney, any further on your report? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Open Up for Public Hearing, Discuss, Take Action on Ordinance 1114. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1114, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Satellite Beach City Code, abordance of Section 58-93A, local business tax receipt required, and 58-96A, sale delinquency penalty for doing business without local business tax receipt to amend the departmental responsibility for local business tax receipt process, providing per separability clause and providing effective date to second reading of ordinance Number 1114.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1114 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Godd, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Discussion from council. Here and un, at this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Nine. Here and un, bring it back to council. Further comments? Here and un, Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. This time, move on to Agenda Item 10, Discuss, Take Action on Resolution Number 964. And before we start, there is an updated version of 964. Everybody have it at their desk.
Resolution Number 964, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing policies and fees for use of Satellite Beach recreation facilities, repealing Resolution 941, providing effective dates, reading Resolution 964.
Thank you.
Resolution 964.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Godd, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, any further comment from council? This time, open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Joanne Regan, resident, sometimes it goes into the agenda packet as an addendum when it's not, when a document is not ready in time for the Friday before the meeting. And as a resident, I really appreciate when, whenever it does become available, that it get added to the web. Thank you.
Public comment portion is still open. Here and un, further, back to council. Further council comments? Here and un, Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. That was 964. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Election of Vice Mayor, Liaisons for FY1516, Boards and Committees.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Brymer for Vice Mayor.
Second.
Doesn't need a second. Just nominate then.
Any further nominations?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw? Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that.
On the list, Liaisons for the Boards for 1516. Does anybody want to change from where they're at?
Not particularly.
Where you're at on the boards. Okay?
Do you need a motion?
I think we just, that's consensus.
Yeah, consensus.
Okay. And Boards and Committees, being appointments to Space Coast League of Cities, Voting Delegate and Alternate Delegate, and Appointment to City Representative on the South Beach Coalition. Is everyone happy with where we're at in that?
Believe it as it is.
So, Councilman Osmer, still the voting alternate? Okay, because you need to be, or somebody needs to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Okay. Agenda Items Four, remember it is the January 6, 2016. This will be our last meeting this year.
Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to remind everyone that you will be appointing your members to the Charter Review Committee at the next meeting, so please be prepared for that. And then also, you'll be goal-setting at the 2016, for 2016 at that meeting. I will send you out the staff goals, so you have that as a reference point prior to that.
Thank you. Any further, I'm sure anything on boards. Everybody's good, right? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Appointments to Boards.
Move to Ray Allen LaMonte, the Conference of Plan and Advisory Board as a primary member.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Godd, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion?
We're showing 10 people here with the new handbook, CPAD. Has a total of seven now, five primary and two alternates. I think that we need to pare down by attrition. However, Mr. LaMonte is one of only three people on the CPAD who has shown a serious interest in attending and participating in the meetings. So, I think that we should reappoint him and start winnowing down as we get to other people whose terms come up who have not participated very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Here and un, Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Back up. I apologize. Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda 14, Adoption of Minutes of November 18, 2015, Regular Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion on it, change the minutes. Here and un, Lenore?
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business before council? First off, Merry Christmas. Happy holiday to everybody, and the next meeting will be in January. So, good night. Thank you.